Alderman Kerkowski.
Here.
Lorick.
Here.
Dukenyak.
Here.
Tolman.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Everybody, please rise for the pledge. Mike, will you lead us?
You look like you're looking at me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I trust you all had time to look at the minutes. If there's any questions or corrections, if not, motion. Kerkowski, make a motion to approve the minutes of 9:05:17.
Mr. Kerkowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
We have two public hearings, one public hearing tonight, excuse me, for a conditional use permit submitted by Kelly Gallagher, Oak Creek LLC, for an amendment to the time and compliance section of the existing conditional use permit affecting the properties located at 6304 and 6340 South Howell Avenue. Kathryn.
Public hearing number one is to consider a request submitted by Kelly Gallagher, SSV Oak Creek LLC, for an amendment to the time of compliance section of the existing conditional use permit affecting the properties located at 6304 and 6340 South Howell Avenue and 137, 147, and 209 East College Avenue. The applicant is Kelly Gallagher, SSV Oak Creek LLC. Property owner is SSV Oak Creek LLC. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is August 24, 2017.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I'm the Director of Community Development for the city. This, again, is a public hearing on a request to amend the conditional use permit for the properties, and I won't read them again because they're numerous. But in essence, in July of last year, July 19th, to be precise, the council adopted a conditional use permit to allow for a self-storage facility on that corner, basically the southeast corner of Howell Avenue and College Avenue. Part of the conditions and restrictions that were adopted pursuant to that conditional use permit required the commencement of construction within one year of the adoption of the ordinance, which would have put it back into, again, July of this year. Given the fact that the project was delayed for a certain period due to some unanticipated issues with the DNR, the building permit never was issued or applied for. So the applicant is requesting a one-year extension of the time to obtain a building permit. This is reflected in the draft conditions and restrictions that are before you this evening and those that were presented to the Plan Commission earlier. Nothing else has changed with respect to that regulating document. So the proposal tonight is to amend Section 11 of that conditions and restrictions relative to an additional year for the issuance of the building permit. The Plan Commission has reviewed this proposed amendment to the conditional use permit. They have recommended their approval. Now, this is a public hearing. Anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the amendment to the conditional use permit, please fill out a comment form when your name is called by the city clerk. Proceed to address the podium to address your questions or comments to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. As Doug said, it is a public hearing. We will make three calls. This is the first call. Second call. Third and final call. We will now close the public hearing, move on to item five, and that is consideration of an ordinance for the conditions and restrictions that we just spoke of. Questions, comments from the council? Dan.
Dan, I just had one. For the applicant, Mr. Gallagher. Can you come up to the mic, please?
Name and address, then.
Attorney Todd Ferris, 330 East Kilburn Avenue, Milwaukee. And Matt Clemente from Stantec is here.
Mr. Ferris, then, just to confirm, Mr. Gallagher is entitled to this property?
Yeah, he's the owner.
He is the owner, correct? So I wanted to confirm.
Stephen.
Oh, go away. I got, sir. These are simple. First off, maybe if you can't, maybe somebody can't. What's, what is foundry sand? Just curious.
Matt Clemente, 12075 Corporate Parkway in Mequon. I'm Stantec civil engineer for the project. Foundry sand, as I understand it, is the material that's used during a casting process. So the foundry sand is made into the mold, and when it was disposed of, back in the good old days when we weren't watching as close, it was a great backfill to use. And unfortunately, it has a lot of, it has some contaminants with it. It's the type of contaminants that the DNR allows to stay in place if it's capped with buildings or pavement, and that's what we plan to do on the site. So it's, it won't be in contact with any users or visitors to the site. Everything will be contained underneath the pavement or the buildings.
One final question. I remember back in the original discussions that there was concern that the longer the property stayed vacant, the larger the wetland becomes. At least, that's what was discussed when this started.
Yes.
So is this, your delay going to, we're gonna have a issue with the wetlands?
No. The delineation is good for one year, so by statute, the wetland doesn't change, I'm sorry, for five years. So by statute, the wetland itself doesn't change, or we don't need to revisit the exact size of the wetland. We can deal with it as we delineated it a year ago. In general, it could have changed a little bit, getting bigger or smaller, but it's basically the same size right now.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Motion. Kerkowski, make a motion that council adopt ordinance number 2867, an ordinance to amend the conditions and restrictions in ordinance number 2814, for a conditional use permit for a self-storage facility, mini warehousing, at 6304 and 6340 South Howell Avenue and 137, 147, and 209 East College Avenue.
Lorick, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Under new business, item number six is a consideration of a resolution accepting the financial statements in the auditor's report, and with that, I believe it's up to Bridgette to explain this.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Mayor. We do have Steve Swinski and, or I'm sorry, Tim Swinski and Steve Henke from Baker &amp; Tilly that are here to give you a brief presentation on our 2016 audit.
Stand. Good evening. I'm Steve Henke. I'm with senior manager with Baker &amp; Tilly. Been involved with the audit for the city for the last number of years. With me is Tim Swinski. Tim is the senior accountant, kind of the guy on the ground when we do the audit work. And I've got a brief presentation. It'll be on the slides, I guess, but also a paper copy here in your hands. We were engaged to audit the 2016 financial statements and express our opinion. We have done that. Our opinion is the first three pages of the financial statements. And in technical terms, we've issued an unmodified opinion. In layman's terms, we issued a clean opinion. It's what you want to hear from us as your auditors. What does that mean? That the, it means that the financial statements are fairly presented. All the appropriate disclosures are included within that document. And we'll use the handout to, the financial statement document is over 80 pages, so we'll, in the brevity of time and expediency here, we'll use the handout to hit a couple of key highlights. So on the first graph there, generally, the councils always want to know, well, what's our fund balance in the general fund? That seems to be a key driver. For 2016, your fund balance increased slightly, about $100,000, to about $7.6 million. And you can see on the bottom of that page there, below the graph, the different components. We've got a non-spendable piece, an assigned piece, and an unassigned piece. And really, the focus generally becomes on the unassigned. The unassigned piece covers emergencies, cash flow matters as the funding from the state of Wisconsin comes in at different points throughout the year. So those are the dollars that kind of keep the boat floating throughout the year. Moving to the next slide, or, well, actually, just a couple of comments on the first slide. Sorry, Bridgette.
Your turn.
You know, the council has adopted a financial policy for the city, and that policy sets forth that the unassigned fund balance in the general fund should be in the range between 15% and 25%. It's a calculated threshold. And the 5.6 that's there at the end of 2016 falls within that range. It's approximately 21%. So you're within your financial guidelines and the policies that you've established. Just as a point of reference, the Government Finance Officers Association, which is a technical trade organization for governmental entities, sets forth a number of different policies, and their recommended fund balance policy is a minimum of no more than, or a minimum of no less than two months of operating expenses. So that's about 16.66%, or just under 17%. So you're certainly within the range of the industry norms and standards. Now, moving on to the next slide. This is a snapshot of your general fund activities, revenues, and expenses for the year. As I mentioned, you added revenues and transfers, exceeded expenditures and transfers out by about $100,000 for the year, which is, you know, pretty comparable to the last few years of activity. Moving to the next slide, this is just, you know, I say pictures are worth a thousand words. Here's your current 2016 revenues, kind of broken into, you know, four or five major categories here. Obviously, property taxes is the key driver of the revenues, followed by intergovernmental revenues. Just as a point of reference, your budget was $21,578,396. Your actual revenues were $21,578,830 for about a $400 difference. So from a budgeting standpoint, you can't get a whole lot closer than that. Moving to the next slide, this breaks down the revenues over, you know, the last five years of activity, and the only takeaway I can leave you with this is, obviously, the revenues have been extremely flat over the last five-year period. The next chart does the same for the expenditures for 2016, again, breaking it down into five or six key categories. Obviously, public safety, general government, and public works are your key drivers. From a budgetary standpoint, you had budgeted $23,277,200 for expenditures. Actual expenditures were $22,469,481 for, you know, a positive variance of just over That variance was spread among a number of different areas. General government, primarily for contingency, public safety, health, public works, related in a number of cases to open positions and maybe not incurring the overtime that might have been budgeted, or those types of things. So there wasn't one specific driver that led to that positive variance. Again, the next chart here, similar to the revenues, looks at these major categories over the last five-year period, and pretty similar to the results on the revenue, which drives, in a lot of cases, the expenditures. Things were, are pretty consistent over the last five-year period. And finally, the last slide is related to your borrowing, geo-debt and related capacity. Your outstanding debt at the end of 16 is just over $97 million. Your debt limit is $155 million, so you certainly have capacity available to take on additional borrowings if the need does arise. Obviously, there's been a lot of things going on in the city over the last few years that prompted needing to go to the bond market, as you can see, from '12 to '13 to '14, the rise there, but certainly within the, at least the statutory guidelines that are provided for borrowing. The second report that we did issue was a communication report, and that includes, you know, one internal control comment, similar to prior years and similar to most other units of government. The auditing standards require that if the auditors prepare the financial statements, in most cases, there is an internal control comment written related to that. Any, the other things included in that document include any observations, informational points of things that are coming down the road that may be of interest to management and the council. And then there's a whole series of required communications that we, as your auditors, need to make, and I will summarize those by saying they're normal and customary. With that, I'll conclude my prepared remarks. Certainly be amicable to respond to any questions.
Any questions? Comments? I'll just ask one for the general public.
Sure.
On a scale of A, B, C, D, where would you rate the city of Oak Creek?
A, B, C.
Financially speaking.
I would say you're certainly in the B to the A range. I mean, as we taught, as I mentioned earlier, I mean, you have a set of financial policy, which is certainly within the range and consistency of other communities of similar size to Oak Creek. Your unassigned fund balance falls within that range, so is that average or above average? You know, I certainly think it's solid.
Responsible?
Yeah. Yeah. You're living, and the other information that was presented, living within the budgetary means and things. And, you know, quite frankly, in Milwaukee County, you're one of the few communities that has buildable land and, you know, obviously, all the development that's going around is certainly a positive for the city going forward.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks.
Any comments, Bridgette? Anything further you want to say?
Well, I mean, I'm certainly proud of the fact that we wrapped up another really large audit in the activity that's happened, and that in terms of the notes and the communication from the auditors, financially, there isn't anything listed there as something that we should be improving on for next year. Not that we won't improve on our own efficiencies, but we either wore Tim out, or it's not normal for the auditors to kindly suggest some items where we could do a little better. So we, as a department, I am incredibly proud of what we have done this year and how we have accomplished it and achieved another good audit.
Thank you very much for your hard work. Anyone else? Not motion.
We'll move to approve Resolution 11853-091917, accepting the 2016 financial statement and auditor's report as prepared and presented by Baker &amp; Tilly Virtual Crowsy LLP.
Mr. Kerkowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tolman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item seven, it's to consider a motion to discontinue a contract for services with Universal Medical Resources, UMR, and enter into a contract for services with Benefit Administration Systems, BAS, for third-party administration service for the city's self-funded health insurance plan. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor. I can take this one. If it pleases the mayor and council, how I'd like the discussion to go tonight is if we could possibly have our consultant with Arthur J. Gallagher come up, Scott Schultz, and give maybe a general overview of the activities of the benefits team, which has come to be myself, the city administrator, the finance director, comptroller, human resources manager, Becky Shermer, and benefits coordinator, Marie Lenda. Kind of give an idea of, for the council, of your role for the city, on behalf of the city, as well as what the activity and the vetting has been of our health insurance cost controls over the last, you know, better part of a year. And then we'll circle back and discuss more specifically the memo before, and the action before the council tonight, if that'd be okay.
Sure. So Scott Schultz from Arthur J. Gallagher. We are the benefits consultant to the city of Oak Creek, have been for many years. So for the better part of a year, as Andrew just referenced, what we've been doing is looking at a number of cost-saving solutions to lower your health insurance spend. You're self-funded, as all of you probably know, which means you pay your own claims. We have some stop-loss protections in place against catastrophic loss, but as our claims go, medical and prescription drugs, so goes the costs of the city in an aggregate basis. So we vetted or looked at probably almost a dozen different solutions. The city decided to pursue ultimately four. And the reason for the departure from United Medical Resources, whom we've been with since 1997, is because one of those solutions require the hiring of a vendor that doesn't obtain information from UMR, unfortunately. It's not the vendor's fault, it's that UMR will not generate the connectivity between their firm and this new firm. Okay? So all four solutions have generated, or should generate, significant savings next year. The most significant savings comes from this program that will be administered by AMPS, A-M-P-S, which is a reference-based and medical bill review audit service. And again, in order to use their service, we have to find an independent third-party administrator that will agree to send all of our claims data before it's been processed and paid over to this firm so that they have 48 hours to audit it, to reduce the cost as low as possible before you make your payments.
That's kind of the backdrop.
Take it over from here. So the action in consideration before the council this evening is to discontinue our contract for services with UMR, and then in turn engage a new third-party administrator who does work with this AMPS vendor, which is Benefit Administration Systems out of Chicago, Illinois. When we were going through this process as a team, I want to reiterate the fact that the first thing we always considered when looking at these vendors and their solutions was the impact to the member, the insured, the employee, or the retiree. So through that lens, we really informed ourselves of whether, you know, the proverbial juice was worth the squeeze in terms of, is the disruption worth to the employee, the member, worth the benefit financially or otherwise to the city? And so we kind of looked at that continuum that you see in your memo in vetting these roughly 10 or 12 vendors, and we ultimately arrived at these four, which we can talk more about if the council desires. But the most meaningful vendor that Scott had referenced in AMPS that really could produce some significant and prevailing cost constraints for the city is, you know, does not work with UMR. So that is, you know, not, it's not preferable to go through the option or implementation of a new third-party administrator. We'll have a lot of questions and answers during open enrollment sessions that are already being scheduled this fall. But we thought that giving the meaningful program and solution that AMPS provides, that this was the right time to move to BAS. In addition to that, I would also add, the team was thoroughly impressed with the member focus of BAS as a third-party administrator for the city. So yes, we have the AMPS thing, but set that aside. We're confident we're getting a very good third-party administrator for the city. And again, the member focus that was iterated and reiterated during the very comprehensive interview process that we had with these potential TPAs, everybody came away feeling that the customer service focus that BAS provides will be a benefit to the employees and the members moving forward. So that's the, that's the decision in front of the council tonight, to discontinue services with UMR and then engage BAS for our TPA services.
Questions? Comments? Alderman Gale.
Thanks, Andrew. Thanks, Scott. Finance committee had a very early kind of global look at this kind of process. Scott was in probably the spring.
Back in March.
If I recall. Where we were educated on a term that apparently is industry drug, a member abrasion, which we all come to, come to grow fond of. The focus, though, at the Scott was to really focus on limiting member abrasion as we looked at solutions to keep healthcare costs under control and limit exposure and impact on our employees. And I think Andrew and Marie and Bridgette and Becky have done a fairly, not a fairly excellent job of looking at the various options out there, nailing down some solutions that are really going to have a positive impact on not only our provision of healthcare to our employees, but the city's exposures to our healthcare costs. So we appreciate the good work, and I think it's a very strong program, and employees I think will be very appreciative and will do them a good, a good bit of good fortune moving forward in terms of impacting and limiting their cost exposure. So thanks.
And just one more point of interest to our employees, there will be a rollout period where there'll be a tutorial and question and answer session, I'm sure, about to change over and how it'll affect the employee. That's it. Motion.
We'll move to discontinue a contract for services with Universal Medical Resources, UMR, and enter into a contract for services with Benefit Administration Systems, BAS, for third-party administration services for the city's self-funded health insurance plan effective 1/1/2018.
Mr. Kerkowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tolman.
Item number eight is consideration of our vendor summary report. Any questions? Comments? Please direct them to Bridgette. No questions? Okay. Motion.
We'll move to approve the vendor summary report in the amount of $786,505.74.
Mr. Kerkowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Item nine gets us to health. It's consideration of a motion to confirm a mayoral appointment of Darcy Dubois. Who will be taking that one? Is Becky here?
At the podium, Darcy. Good evening. We have Darcy here for you. She is hopefully our new community public health officer. She comes to us from the city of Milwaukee, and she can tell you a little bit about herself, but she has interviewed with the city administrator, two members of the board of health, members from the health department, the interim health officer, as well as our past acting health officer from South Milwaukee. And she comes highly recommended from the interview panel. She also had a chance to meet with the entire health department, and they got to ask her questions about her management style and knowledge in different areas. And then she also met separately for a second interview with the city administrator.
Right.
Add to that, Mayor. We, Becky, how many total applicants did we have? Thirty-some, I want to say.
Yeah, I think it was 32.
We had seven really qualified people to come in and interview for this position. I mean, we were overwhelmed with the caliber of the talent. So for Darcy to have risen to the top of, kind of the cream of the good crop, is really a testament to Darcy's experiences, her personality, and we really expect great things from Darcy. And as Becky stated, she comes highly recommended. So with that, maybe Becky, or Darcy, if you want to share a little bit about yourself?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Darcy Dubois, and I'm really looking forward to joining the health department team. I have a background in social work and a master's degree in public health. I worked for over 10 years in direct practice as a social worker with diverse groups of individuals and families in several different communities in the Milwaukee area. Most recently, I have been serving as a program manager with the city of Milwaukee Health Department. I run an evidence-based home visiting program that serves fathers, and I think that the skills and experience I've gained in my current role will really be an asset to the health officer role. I'm very dedicated to and passionate about public health. I feel strongly that public health contributes to the health and well-being of a community. And as Becky mentioned, I've had a chance to meet the health department team. I think they're great, and I'm really looking forward to working with them to serve the community of Oak Creek.
Great. Thank you, Darcy, and I'd like to welcome you. I know I got to meet you Saturday very briefly, but welcome to the city of Oak Creek. Do you have any questions of us? This is probably your first time meeting a full council, so if you have any questions...
I don't think I do. I'm sure I will.
Do you have any questions of us? This is probably your first time meeting the full council, so if you have any questions...
I don't think I do. I'm sure I will, once I dig in a little bit, but right now, I don't.
Does anybody have any questions for Darcy?
No questions, then, just a statement. Darcy, welcome aboard. Looks from your resume and background, I see a very strong candidate. We're very pleased to have you with us, and for Andrew and the rest of the team, that looks like you drove a very strong recruitment process. We appreciate your efforts. So congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Again, welcome. Motion?
Kirkowski will make a motion to confirm the mayoral appointment of Darcy Dubois as the new community public health officer effective October 23, 2017, with the conditions and provisions as listed in the employment offer dated September 14, 2017.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Item number 10 brings us to fire and it's consideration of a motion to approve an amendment to the paramedic service contract between Milwaukee County Office of Emergency Management, EMS Division, regarding the addition of the Fat Pot Dispatching Software for the Computer-Aided Dispatching. With us tonight, we have Chief Rosendich, so I think he's going to explain a little bit of it.
A quick background is, back in January, the council approved the two-year paramedic contract. Internal to that was, in another section, was the extension of the next two years, 2019 and '20, to be eligible, was to, as soon as this amendment was presented from the county, that if the city wanted to move into this automatic extension into 1920, they would agree to this extension amendment. What had happened was it came down to just the mayor signing it, and many of us chiefs didn't feel comfortable that it should be front of the full council to do it, and also, we're one of the last ones to do it because we really vetted this out, so to speak, and we had a lot of questions through this whole process. Dealing with the county lately has been an interesting dynamics, to say the least, and even in this process, what this does in 19 and '20 is, makes us eligible for any of the continuing money that the county chooses to disperse to us. It also gives us medical direction, medical control, a number of educational pieces and a few things. But there have been changes. We have been shifted with supplies, you'll see at budget time, that now the city is taking on the whole medical supplies that we purchase instead of the money being deducted from the county payment. It's basically, call it an accounting item, but that is one of the other things that's part of this. One thing that, and we discussed on Friday with Caesar, is the technology side of this whole Fat Pot, and probably wondering, what is Fat Pot? And I finally found out today, and I can, now I got it memorized, Andrew, it's "for all the people of the world."
Just to note, too, that internally, we hope the council will play along, but we've come to the conclusion that nobody gets to ever say Fat Pot again after tonight, so we've heard it a lot the last 60 days.
And what part of this technology and this dispatching does is, it'll sit in the dispatch center, it allows the dispatchers to see all the units in fire EMS. There's supposed to be a police component of this, where the jury's still out on that side on what all that provides, but on the fire and EMS side, that you'll be able to see all the units available, so if Franklin had a fire, they can go ahead and dispatch our fire engine as a mutual aid engine going to them without, with saving time in that process. But let's just say that we cross staff, our med unit covers the engine also, our med unit is out, the fire engine goes down, not eligible to go to Franklin for the mutual aid, Franklin will see that automatically on the screen, and they will go to the next available unit that they can dispatch. So that's kind of a quick synopsis of what the Fat Pot technology does. Western Lakes District in Oconomawak uses it, Lake County, Chicago, Orange County, California. So it's from small platforms to large platforms that use it. The jury is still out, what happens after 2020? So, and the one, last thing that I'll say that went away, and this is with this contract over these next four years, is currently the county has a pot of a half a million dollars. For every ALS transport we make, the city would get $30. Well, that's through the year, and usually about August it ran out. Over those four years, it's being reduced by 25%. Our city currently, or the year before was getting around 25, so this year we're around 19, next year is 12, all the way down to zero. So that's kind of the other cost factor that's involved with it, plus the $10,500 and change of maintenance fee. So that's kind of the summary of this.
Okay. Questions? Comments? Well, as Chief Rosendich said, when it came to me for a signature, I kind of looked at it. I thought it was worth bringing to the city administrator, our technology officer, our chiefs. This has a lot of tentacles, goes a lot of places. It is just a short-term contract, and I really, I really would hope that we, in two or three years, have different options to take going down the road with it. It's...
You're an optimistic man.
It's, well, we'll see, we'll see what the future brings, but again, in speaking to the chiefs, got quite an education on the long-term aspects of this, and I think it's something we have to look at over the coming years for possibly to continue or have an alternative, so leave it at that. Anything else? Nope. Thank you, Tom. Motion?
We'll move to approve the amendment to the paramedic services contract between Milwaukee County Office of Emergency Management, EMS Division, regarding the addition of Fat Pot Dispatching Software for Computer-Aided Dispatching.
Mr. Kozciel, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
We, now it brings us to licensing committee. I will turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski.
You've got 21 minutes to do this, right?
You've got 21.
Okay.
If that's what it takes.
All right.
21, 22, whatever it takes.
License committee did not meet prior to the council meeting. Tentative recommendations are as follows. Item 11, Kirkowski will make a motion to grant an operator's license to the five individuals listed on the agenda favorable background reports received.
Mr. Kozciel, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item 13, Kirkowski will make a motion to grant a change of agent for Buffalo Wild Wings, number 219, 8171 South Howell Avenue, from Jared Bellis to Lisa Gammon, 2169 South 90th Street, West Alice, favorable background report received. Dukenyak, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tomlin.
And before we adjourn, I would just like to thank our entire staff that turned out and worked for the sneak peek. It was an event we held here Saturday, and you got a chance to come in to City Hall, take a tour, visit all the departments, talk to all the departments. Also like to thank all the businesses that took part. We had hundreds of citizens show up for that and explore and discover what's in this city. Again, my thanks to the staff that came out and spent their day here. Nothing's possible without you and your hard work, so thank you. With that...
Kirkowski will make a motion to adjourn.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Thank you for watching, and as always, get out there, celebrate, discover Oak Creek.